I will. Call to order, our work session meeting. It is Tuesday, April 18th of 2023, and the time is 3:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you please call the roll for us?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez, and Mr. Mendez.
Here.
Please, we have a form press up.
And Mr. Prather just being.
And we will start with our citizen comment time period. I see that we have two on the list. There's a Claude, I'm afraid I'm going to mispronounce this, so forgive me. Aurelius?
Yeah, that's him.
Okay, if you'll go to the podium.
Hello.
We welcome citizen comment at our meetings. And if you will, check the timer that's on both screens. And you will have three minutes. You'll, when you have 20 seconds left, you'll be in that yellow part.
Okay. Alrighty, good afternoon, everyone. I wasn't expecting to speak first, but I just wanted to say I'm here today again for the nine-day moratorium. So I just found out that we'll be bringing that up on the agenda on May 2nd. So I'm super excited about that. But I just wanted to reiterate some key points from when I was here last time. The nine-day moratorium has become a burden to me and to some of the other landlords and apartment complexes in San Marcos. Right now is a very tricky season for us because when May starts, residents cannot pay rent in May and know they won't be, they won't have to move out until July and avoid the entire eviction process with the nine-day process. Currently, right now, my apartment is 100% leased. However, we're really not because there's about 50 to 60 people who are delinquent, who haven't paid rent or tried to make attempts of paying rent. We have a bunch of students who could have the ability of just going home with their parents. We could backfill the apartment, get new people to come in. But because they know we won't be able to evict them until 90 days, we find people just chilling in the apartment. This weekend, I just had a house party that I had to break up. Walking to the unit, it's three people who have my highest delinquent balances. So the nine-day moratorium was something that was created to assist people during COVID-19, which at the beginning, like I said last time, was very crucial. But now, three years later, people, I take the full advantage of anything that have, that we have left to offer. So I just want to reiterate, I think this moratorium should be lifted and we should go back to the three-day proceeding. And I know I have some of my coworkers and people in the industry who will be sending emails to you guys as well to discuss their personal experiences. And some couldn't make it out here today, but we'll be trying to make it to the 6 o'clock meeting tonight. And I just, we'll be back on May 2nd and hope you guys consider removing the moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, and next is Maxfield Baker.
Hello. Yes, I have a few things, so I'm going to try to talk quickly. Hope I don't lose anybody. For one, I keep being contacted by students thinking that I am still on council. This might be because if you look at the city's website, there are plenty of places that still list me as an active member on different boards and committees. Please address that and fix it. Also, lots of you go and campaign up on council or up on campus, but don't seem to be quite available for those students when they need you most. And it's just for like school projects and stuff, but still, you all should be answering those phone calls, not former elected officials. Also, the Voices program, which I've talked about before, is not very publicly accessible. There's really not a whole lot of information on the website. Most notably, there are not directions as to how people would reach out to the chief of police to organize their own Voices meeting. I have been vigilant and have secured my own meeting with the chief of police at the end of this month, and I really look forward to it. But right now, the current process is, amounts to gatekeeping, right? And we all know that that is not good for city government. Lastly, you have an executive item, an executive session item on your agenda, and it's very clearly a big apartment complex that's trying to come into San Marcos. If you Google it, you can find the plans online. I just did it today. You can see exactly what they want to build, how big they want to build it, and exactly where they want to put it. So that's at the corner of University and Hutcheson. We do not want another parlor downtown eating up downtown parking. You all know and vied for downtown businesses to vote for you during your campaigns, so make sure that you hear them out. And I wanted to remind you that you also have the ability to waive your executive privilege to talk about this actually in public session if you would prefer. That is an option for you. Lastly, I really appreciate the city putting together the Dunbar Historic, National Historic Registry Meeting that happened the other week. It was super awesome. Lots of my neighbors showed up. I live in Dunbar myself. And there are some really good things that are going to come with that national recognition. However, most of that applies to profit, I forget the term exactly, but buildings that are turning a profit. They are the ones that are going to qualify for tax breaks and tax credits. And while that can be good, I'm, and others in my neighborhood are concerned about like short-term rentals being the ones that benefit it from, benefit from it. I have spoke with Ryan Patrick Perkins and, you know, that my initial reaction was that same concern about, hey, this is just going to be short-term rentals. We've already seen historic buildings in the Dunbar neighborhood being turned into those right there on Nance Street. But they are, they could potentially serve as a mechanism to help people build generational wealth as well. So I don't want to get that lost in this conversation. But what would be better is local designations for historic districts. And I know for a fact that Ryan Patrick Perkins, former chair of the Historic Commission, has talked to you all about this and that when I was on council, I also tried to bring these forward and failed to get a second to have a public discussion on those. So please, 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 talk to your consultants. We mentioned this concern to them at that meeting. They said that they would bring that forward to you in some fashion, but it would be lovely to have two of you council members raise your hands right now and say, I want to help local historic houses qualify for these registries. We did that fantastic survey the other, the other year, and this would help keep their property taxes low. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Trevino, is that everyone?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then we will move on to item one.
Receive a staff presentation regarding the use of a new facility lease agreement template for nonprofit organizations and provide direction to staff.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This afternoon's presentation is in regards to the city's facility lease agreements with nonprofit organizations. We enter into partnerships with these nonprofit organizations to provide and expand public services to the community. The city does this by leasing city facilities to these organizations. As we've gone through and assessed the agreements, staff has identified issues with the current lease model. To address these issues, staff has identified proposed revisions to the lease agreements that we believe will be beneficial to both the nonprofit organizations and the city. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Sabas Avila, Director of Public Works, to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. Good afternoon, council members. Sabas Avila, Director of Public Works. In this presentation, we will, as Ms. Ray has indicated, we will be discussing city facility lease agreements with nonprofit organizations. In addition, we will be discussing some issues that we're experiencing with these lease agreements, as well as providing you recommendations that city staff believes will be beneficial not just to the city, but also to the nonprofit. And last, we will seek your direction on those recommendations. Next slide. This presentation will focus on facilities not located on parkland or airport property as those facilities are regulated under different state laws and/or management contracts. For this presentation, we will focus on six facility lease agreements with four nonprofits. The total square footage of these facilities is 34,000 square feet. The average building age of these facilities is 70 years of age. And the total value of these facilities is $1.7 million. The six facili, uh, next slide. The six facilities include the Calaboose Museum, the Cephas House, the Community Health Center, the Georgia Street Center, the Mitchell Center, and the Price Center. Next slide. As background, a majority of these leases were developed in the 1990s, nearly 30 years ago. Prior to 2019, the Community Service Department administered these lease agreements. In 2019, the city experienced key staff turnover and retirements. Following 2019, responsibility of the lease agreements were reassigned from the Parks Department to the General Services Department and to ultimately the Public Works Department in 2021. Next slide. Following the most recent reorganization, the Public Works Department met with each nonprofit specifically to ask, how are the leases working? What issues are the nonprofits experiencing? And what challenges, or I'm sorry, what changes would they like to make to the leases? In addition, the Public Works Department hired an independent inspector to provide a facility condition assessment of the facility. Following the meetings and a review of the inspections reports, the public works staff identified several areas of concern. Oh, I'm sorry. Next slide. As I indicated, following the meetings, we found several areas of concern. The first area of concern was that the current lease model is not sustainable for the city, for the nonprofit, or for the facility itself. The current model requires the nonprofit to not only be responsible for the cost of providing community services, but also to provide the cost for repair and maintenance of these aging facilities. The nonprofits indicated several challenges: limited staff, limited funding, and limited knowledge of facility repairs. Because of this, facility repairs are happening infrequently. And as a result, the facilities are in declining condition. Additionally, staff found lease agreements are not uniform and vary widely by nonprofit. The lease terms, language, and responsibilities are ambiguous or outdated. The leases lack quantifiable metrics to, for annual reviews such as minimum hours of operation. Some facilities are underutilized, and in one case, the facility lease had exact, has expired in 2011, and in another case, one facility had no lease. Next slide. The findings of each facility are as follows. The Calaboose facility condition is in overall fair condition. However, major facility repairs are still required for foundation cracking, roof damage, wall stress cracking, and termite damage. The Calaboose had indicated that the lease responsibilities are very ambiguous. They also requested improved janitorial services. However, after reviewing the lease agreement, we realized that the less C is actually responsible for those janitorial services. The city also found that the facility has limited hours of operation. Next slide. The Cephas House is in overall good condition. It was renovated in 2012, and minor facility repairs are required, including foundation leveling and wall stress cracking repairs. The Calaboose Committee has requested a lease amendment to the Calaboose, the existing Calaboose lease, to include the Cephas House. The city found that the Cephas House currently does not have a lease agreement with Calaboose. Next slide. The Community Health Services Clinic is in overall poor condition. Major facility repairs are required, including repairs of roof leaks, foundation damage, rot siding damage, and ADA issues. Community Action has requested technical assistance to make these repairs. In addition, they've indicated that funding for repairs are difficult because of grant restrictions. The city found that the costs of repairs are nearing reconstruction costs for this facility. The city council has allotted $90,000 of ARP funding for this facility. Next slide. The Georgia Street Senior Center is in overall good condition. Minor facility repairs are required. Community Action has requested lease changes for assistance for major repairs. And funding, and they've also indicated that funding for repairs are difficult because of those funding restrictions. Last, the city's concern is that the current lease agreement is for the use of a parking lot. The current lease does not actually mention the facility or building itself. City Council has allotted $40,000 of ARP funding for this facility. Next slide. The Mitchell Center is in overall poor condition. Major facility repairs are required, including subfloor water damage, water leak damage, side rotting, and stress cracking. The Boys and Girls Club has requested to purchase the property. The city's findings are that the building is owned by the Boys and Girls Club, but the property is leased to the Boys and Girls Club. And upon expiration of the lease, the building will revert back to the city. There is currently no evidence that the facility is currently being utilized, and cost of repairs are nearing reconstruction cost. Last, the building footprint encodes, encroaches in the floodplain. Next slide. The Price Senior Center is in overall poor condition. Major facility repairs are required, including termite damage, foundation support damage, water damage, and concrete cracking. The nonprofit has indicated they would prefer assistance with maintenance and repairs of the facilities, and they would prefer an operational contract. The city found that the facility is well utilized. The facility is in need of major repairs. The facility is in declining condition, and there are ingress and egress issues with the facility. City Council has allocated $150,000 of ARP funding for facility repairs. So in your packet, you have a draft lease agreement that we hope with these revisions will be beneficial to the city and to the nonprofit. And we would also like to thank Barbara Quick for her assistance in developing this lease agreement. And one of the major changes to the lease agreement is the model itself. The current model requires the nonprofit to not only provide the facility, the service, community services, but to also provide all upkeep, maintenance, and repairs to the facility. We would like to change the lease agreement to a more standard landlord-tenant agreement in where the landlord is responsible for the facility of major repairs, and the tenant is responsible for operations and minor repairs. In the draft agreement, the agreement specifies a $2,000 threshold. The nonprofit would be responsible for any repairs under $2,000, and the city would be responsible for any repairs over $2,000. We believe in this model, the nonprofits would be able to do what they do best, provide services, and the city can do what we do best, is maintain the facility. In addition, we would like to use this template as a standard template for all the nonprofits and standardizing on a 10-year lease term instead of 20 or 30, or in some case, in perpetuity. We would also like to identify and quantify operations and community services to be provided, clarify and update responsibilities, include annual building inspections, and require quarterly financial performance and performance reports. The table on the right indicates what the city would be responsible for and what the nonprofit will be responsible for. Next slide. So given this recommendation, we have several questions for council. One, do you agree with the new landlord-tenant model where the city is responsible for major maintenance of the facility and the nonprofit is responsible for minor maintenance and operations? Do you agree with maintenance and repair threshold of $2,000? Do you agree with the use, with the lease term of 10 years? Do you agree with identifying community service metrics? And would you like to proceed with the lease agreement template? And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, council, we've got some decision points, but I'll ask if you want to ask your questions first before we start with those. I have one.
Yes.
And that is on the repair of $2,000. Here's my question. If something happens and the floor is going to be over 2,000, less than 2,000, and the something else is going to be less than 2,000, maybe it's an appliance, and something else is less than 2,000, but all together they add up to over 2, how are we going to look at that?
So we would look at each repair as an incident. So let's say, for example, you have a leaking water faucet. That leaking water faucet has caused water damage to the flooring, to the subfloor, and possibly the foundation. In that case, we would look at that holistically. The water damage was the issue. And the result of that damage was significant. And so we would look at it as similar to how insurances look at claims. We'll look at each incident as it's, as one incident and
Okay.
the total cost for that incident.
Okay. Think we'll probably need clarity of that in the leases, but I like your idea of we look, looking at it like insurance does because that gives us a standard to look at it. So thank you for that clarification. That's very helpful. Mr. Scott?
Something crossed my mind, but it fleeted, but I'll think of it.
It'll come back. Council, anything, Ms. Gleason?
I had, I had one, one thing. One thing is, one of my concerns was the kind of the threshold was, say you have a small repair you know is $1,500, and you let it go for six months and it ends up being $5,000. You know, I don't know if the annual inspections is quite going to catch some of that stuff. I know it's up to them. That was probably my only real concern on with the threshold, that them knowing that they could potentially, hey, if that goes over it, that that could happen. I don't know how we would get around that without additional inspections.
That was my question.
Yeah. But overall, I think it's good. It's much better than what we have. The one other thing I had was with the Boys and Girls Club interested in purchasing the structure. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think, I think I would be open to that.
Oh, let me clarify.
Right.
They were interested in purchasing the property.
The property. Because they own the building. They want to purchase the property.
Correct. At the, at the end of the lease term, the building will revert to the city.
At the end of the lease, it will revert back. Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification. That's all I have for now.
Okay. And for those of you, in case you don't know, that was, I believe it was an old barracks building that actually belonged to the city. And a person saw it on a tour that leadership San Marcos had and convinced the city to move it to this beautiful location. And then it was a big community effort to redo that building. We had a lot of citizens and then donations for, for materials. So that was an old building whenever we started, just, just so y'all know. The building was great after it was rebuilt or redone, but it's, that's been a long time ago. That was in the 90s.
Eric, can, can we make sure the minutes reflect that history so we can keep that?
Okay. We can do that. Uh, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think, did we include the Calaboose on this agreement as well?
Yes.
Now, how much revenue do they make per year? I, I think they probably make very little.
High.
I don't know the exact numbers, but it is not very much.
Right. And if they have a repair that's $1,900, I'm just worried that they won't be able to come up with the funds for that.
Well, and the current lease with the Calaboose is the lease model that we used to create our new lease template. So the lease model, or the lease that Calaboose currently has is like an operational lease. They are, they do not pay for any major maintenance, but they are required to pay for janitorial services, for lawn services, basically for daily operation activities. And so to answer your question, they would, with this change, they would be paying a little bit more because right now they're not paying anything. But we included that threshold to, you know, because the city is incurring a huge expense by doing this. And so we wanted the nonprofits to be responsible for at least some of the maintenance repairs, things that they could do in-house. You know, if you have a broken light fixture or if there's some painting that needs to occur, we would want them to be able to handle those situations. But if it exceeded more than $2,000, we would step in.
Yeah, the way I'm looking at it is like, let's say it's a problem right now for $1,500, and they decide to wait because they can't afford to fix that. Now, six months later, now it's $3,000. I'm just wondering how we would work something like that.
Well, and, and that is one of the questions that we have asked council is what threshold do they, do you feel is appropriate?
So you, you bring up a good point. Is it some of these, they're, they are bringing in money and some don't. So should we look at them differently? Is a question that I have.
Well, there's nothing probably keeping us from, if they incurred an expense, they had an incident come up that they needed a $1,900 repair, there's probably nothing keeping them from coming and requesting from council some additional funds to take care of that. And then we could handle that on a case-by-case basis. I think that's, I think that would be fairer. Then we would be aware of those incidents that happen and then they'd have to come and ask for it. But, you know, it's not that much money, but I could definitely see the nonprofits that it would be an expense for them. I think that's one way we could handle that.
So basically appeal to the city to fix the repair?
If. If it's something that did put them in a bind and they didn't have the money at the time and couldn't raise the funds for it, to come back to the city and say, hey, we do have this repair, it's $1,900, we don't think we can handle it. And something that might get much worse if they're aware of that possibility that might keep it from exacerbating.
I just like the idea of, according to what they make per year, we ought to have that same graphic when it comes to.
Yeah. I don't think I'd have a problem with potentially looking at them individually, but I do appreciate that you're streamlining this, that if something else comes up in the future, you've got a template in place that you don't have to, to work through, so.
Well, let me go around the table on what, what do y'all think about, for, and I think there's only, I don't know. If, if they're bringing in money on a regular basis, should we make that threshold different? Maybe leave it at the 2,000? And for those that barely keeping the door open, and that's not an insult to the group, it's just the way it is, make that one 500 or 1,000, something that they might be able to raise money for, which addresses your, let's not let the 19 go to, does that?
That's fair.
I think that's fair. That'd be all right.
Would y'all be, would staff be comfortable with that? I think there's probably a pretty clear demarcation between those two.
Yes, I think it just depends on if staff is in perpetuity going to be responsible for maintaining these facilities. It may be something that we just need to talk about because we're not even able to maintain all of our facilities
Right.
that we have for serving the public. And so if it continues to be that there's a public purpose, that we're doing these leases and allowing that, I, I would just worry about how much that's going to continue to be on our budget to have to keep competing with us for, who are doing city services. So I, I think it's a, it's something we can look at. So I, I think it's a, it's something we can look at, Mayor, and it's something that we can do if it's $1,000 or some kind of a threshold that still shows some skin in the game of the organization
Right.
that's doing it.
Okay, well, council's interested, so let's see how that works out, how we define the two
Mm-hmm.
categories of, of use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, but for the rest of it, are y'all good with the 2,000?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what I do want to ask about is the mowing, because these are our facilities, and if the yard looks bad, I think it makes all of us look bad. We mow all of our own stuff, so why would we not go ahead and just add these to our mowing contract and get it done?
Well, our mowing contract has increased exponentially in the last few years. And so, again, the, the rationale for having them take care of the lawn is because that is part of their daily operations, but also to keep our mowing cost down, and as Ms. Ray has indicated, to have some skin in the game.
We're keeping up, I mean, we hear from, from several people, not just council, but even citizens, where, gosh, these, these right-of-ways and things don't look good, and, you know, and so we try to balance the cost for all of that, and so then if it's us having to maintain these facilities, then that just means that either there's more cost associated with doing more mowing across the city, or something else doesn't get done. So I think that, that's the prioritization. We just need some help from council in terms of the funding priorities for those things.
Well, and looking at the list, the Cephas House isn't, isn't a big yard. Calaboose isn't, Georgia Street, Price Center, the Community Health Place, the, the Mitchell Center, that's a big, huge yard.
All of these facilities currently are responsible for lawn service.
They are now?
Yes.
Okay. I get that we want them to have some responsibility. I don't know, I just wasn't sure that mowing is it, but if they're doing, they're on mowing now, I guess I'll let that one go.
I, I don't know that I've ever been by any of those and been like, oh, yeah. And, and that's, and that's something that it's pretty easy for a volunteer to go over. And, and I do want them to have some skin in the game, so I think I'm okay.
So we'll leave it alone?
Leave it alone.
Okay. I didn't know that they were doing it now, so we'll keep that.
Do you have any problems now with any of these organizations not able to cut their own grass? Is there anyone, right now, that can't do that?
I, I am not aware of any issues with that.
Yeah, the, the only concern I had is some of these places are run by elderly, and it would be extremely hard to get someone in there to help them with the grass. I'm just thinking out loud.
And I apologize, council. I, I believe one facility is mowed by the city, and that is Calaboose. I apologize for that.
And that's very little grass, which is
Yeah.
And that's, that's not in their agreement, though?
Yeah.
It's just something that we do?
I believe it's in the agreement.
Yeah. I, I didn't want to use them as an example, just picking on them or anything like that, but I got my point across there. Thank you.
So the, I'm going to say the yard of the Mitchell Center, what do we consider theirs and what do we consider ours? Because when I said it was large, I'm thinking of, there, there's a lot there. Do we consider most of that ours and we're mowing it?
So they are responsible for the area identified in their lease.
Uh-huh.
And then the rest is actually parkland.
Right.
So the city is responsible for mowing the parkland area
Okay.
outside of the lease area.
All right, so there's really not much, as I was thinking.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we'll leave mowing alone. Okay, so we'll go back to the, what's on the screen. Are we in agreement with the new landlord-tenant model? And I'm seeing yeses and thumbs up, and I know that I am, because this is something I've been concerned about for a while. So that's good. We've already talked about the maintenance threshold. Are we good with tenure terms? And the community service metrics?
So right now, the lease agreements have very little information as to what services these nonprofits will provide, even some basic information like what hours of operation, or, you know, what hours will they operate? And so we would like to include that in the lease agreements.
So that wasn't in the presentation?
Uh, yes.
In detail?
It was, it was under the recommendations.
Right, but, okay. I think that we're going to need to see more detail on that, but are y'all good with that? If they're going to be using our buildings, that it should, they should be providing a community service, how we define that and what the volume we require remains to be seen, but are y'all good with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Sal?
Well, once again, uh...
Why else would they have the building if they're not going to be providing community service?
True, but to use the Calaboose for an example, I don't think that's open 20, I mean, five days out of the week, it's just so hard to staff. I, I think each case should be a little bit different. It depends what it is.
I don't think anybody's saying they have to be open five days a week
Yeah.
to do that. But at least maybe a museum every Saturday, or something.
Yeah, I, I just sort out for a conversation, see what my colleagues were thinking.
Okay. And do we want to proceed with the revised lease agreement template for negotiations with our nonprofits? Is this going to come back to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Each individual lease agreement will come back to you, and you can review what their hours of operation are, their services, and you can determine what threshold you want to apply.
What I meant was, is the template going to come back to us before y'all start using it?
No, ma'am. What we're asking is, we move forward with the template that's in your packet, and we will return with the completed lease agreements with each nonprofit individually.
So the other thing that Ms. Moyer was reminding me of is that some of these organizations, such as the Price Center and Calaboose, receive $25,000 in operating money for, from the museum funding. So there are other ways that the city supports these organizations, and so just something to keep in mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for the reminder. Okay, so then, if we're ready, ready to roll.
Thank you.
Okay, that closes out this item, so our next item would be executive session. Ms. Vina?
Yes. Executive session according with the following. A, Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to hold discussion regarding litigation matter SM Block 21 LLC versus City of San Marcos. B, Section 551.089 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits, specifically the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of a security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. And Section 551.071, consultation with the city attorneys regarding the legal matters related to the sale.
Looking for a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Uh, if you're, say it again.
Don't move.
All right. Give it to you. I just listened to Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and not everyone had turned on their microphone.
Yeah.
So we need to do that. And sure does seem to be echoing in here. The sound certainly seems to be different. Maybe it's just the volume's a little high.
I actually, I actually appreciate it.
But the echoing...
It is an echo, but there's, no matter how I deal with it, there's always an echo, and just, it's a little more clear.
Ms. Vina, let's vote.
All right, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Okay, motion to pass with 601. And we're going into executive session at 3:40. Counsel, if you need to make one stop on the way, that's fine, but we are going to the conference room. We have returned from our executive session, which we completed at 4:33. Our only item of business left is Q and A with press and public, then we will go into adjournment. It looks like we do have someone here for Q and A with press and public, and we will call on Mr. Baker, and you know the drill with the timer.
Yes, thank you again for allotting me a little extra time to last, my last comment. So I really appreciate the staff's presentation about these nonprofits, and I know that a lot of you think greatly of the work that they do in our community and find them super important. I get the sense that you all are on the same page as this, that not all nonprofits are the same. They're not all like the Chamber of Commerce or the Lions Club, they don't all make a lot of money, right? So I really appreciate when this comes back to hear more discussion about, you know, kind of different circumstances for each one, talking about who's visiting them, and kind of just the historical role they play in the community as well. I do have concerns about the Mitchell Center. I've had neighbors in the past tell me that they've seen drug deals go on there. It's a poorly lit area, and I have also seen the grass, too, one of your comments, be crazy tall. My wife and I walk our dogs there a lot, and so the grass on the other side of the sidewalk facing the street tends to be really, really large, and you end up having to basically walk in the street, making, making the sidewalk kind of useless at that point. And, let's see, so these, these are all just things that I hope you all keep in mind when it comes to the, the discussions in the future. So no real questions, just wanted to put that on your radar. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
For you all. Okay. A motion to adjourn by Mr. Scott and seconded by Mr. Mendoza.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prater?
Aye.
And Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And we will conclude this meeting at 4:35.